March twentieth, Palatan County Board Supervisors Workshop Meeting. Mr. Cox would help us with the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Williams to do the invitation.
Our pledge of allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic which contains one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal, and all.
Jeremiah Paul, thank you for another wonderful day in Palatan County, and all our many blessings. Amen. Any requests, postponement of agenda items, additions, deletions, changes in the order of presentation? Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Moved.
The second.
Second.
All of the bayers say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. County Minister, updates?
Uh, no updates this evening.
Okay. Doesn't have to forgive me a little bit, I'm a little incapacitated here today. Public comment period will open four up, public comments. Anyone wishing to speak to the board, you have three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, you have up to five minutes. Doors open. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
No one on, no one has their hand raised?
I'm not seeing anyone. We'll close the public comment period. Things into old business, which will finish up where we were. Where we finished last week's meeting, which is a departmental. Topics, Public Safety Communications. To where we take an off.
That's where we'll pick up. So Mr. Bo can lead us through that, and then we have Ms. Schmidt with us for any questions related to this department.
Our nine-one-one center has a total proposed budget of two million thirty-one thousand dollars, a six-point-four percent increase overall. There are a few personnel asks. There are two communication officers requested those next fiscal year at just over forty-three thousand dollars each starting day. That's net of a part-time reduction that they plan on incorporating in their budget. Uh, this will also include stipend and on-call pay. And there are some operational statements they made as well. And Ms. Schmidt is here for any questions related to anything regarding our budget.
Anyone have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cox?
I need some help with how, what floaters are. How that works, uh, and how we're trading out part-time or full-time. I almost, I almost understand.
Okay, so. Sorry, I'm just trying to go through my notes. So currently, part-time employees are not able to fill the peak periods. Our current issue is that the PSC workload has significantly, significantly increased with high priority and labor-intensive calls between ten AM and ten PM.
What are your peak areas?
Ten AM to ten PM. That's, that's, it has drastically increased. Um, the solution was to increase staffing by two FTEs to more power shift to help cover those peak periods. Currently, our center works much like PSO. We have four shifts, two-day shifts, two-evening shifts. Um, so we have four shifts that we have to cover, and ten AM to ten PM is every day. So by having the power shifts, we would cover the busiest shifts with two people instead of asking for four. Like, the peak periods, ten to ten. It would call over five hours on day shift, or six hours on day shift, six hours on night shift.
So power shift means, that's a term?
Instead of loader, it's really not a loader, it's, it's a power shift.
So you add more people for, for your?
That is correct, for the increased call volume with the higher intensive, more labor-intensive calls.
Do we have any idea what's causing the increase? Do you have any?
Well, I'll be honest with you, since, um, a lot of it has to do with COVID, um, to be honest with you, our, um, excuse me, I'll give you some numbers. So breathing difficulty and chest pains have significantly increased on fire and EMS side and suspicious and disorderlies in the law enforcement side. So, I don't have the numbers for PSO, but for fire rescue, I do. Um, the priority one calls, which are CPR, um, chest pains, difficulty breathings. In two thousand twenty, they were at, uh, one thousand one hundred and fifty-six. Wait a second. That was in two thousand twenty, and two thousand twenty-one, they went up to one thousand one hundred, actually they dropped, one thousand one hundred and thirty-eight. And then in two thousand twenty-two, we're back up to fifteen hundred. So those are usually the calls where we have to stay on the phone with the caller. We're providing medical instruction. Um, so it's a long time on that telephone call. The same with priority three, we went from five forty-one in two thousand twenty to seven sixty-four in two thousand twenty-one, and we're back up to nine hundred and twenty on priority three. So they've increased, and the only thing that we need to contribute to is more people who are on COVID breathing issues. That's, I feel like I know what her explanation is now.
People like me is getting old.
Well, I can't say that to you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Williams. I mean, Mr. Williams, I'm sorry.
Um, so I understand, you've got four shifts?
Yes, sir.
Did I? And there are six-hour shifts?
There are twelve-hour shifts.
Twelve-hour shifts.
Mm-hmm. We have two-day shifts and two-day shifts.
Okay, when, for any twenty-four hour, you got two shifts?
That is correct.
And you're proposing to go to, how many shifts a day now?
Same. We're not increasing the number of shifts.
Okay, so you just want to increase the numbers, what you said, from ten to ten?
That is correct.
So you will have, how many people working during that period?
We will have four on day shift and three on night shift.
All right, the two people that you got part-time, do they serve as part-time people for any shift that has a vacancy?
That is correct. So right now, we have four full-time, I mean, sorry, four part-time people. Um, two cannot work during the peak hours because of full-time jobs that they already have. We have been very lucky with our part-time staff for the last twelve years that I know of. Um, that would never say no to a shift. They would work anytime. It could be day shift, it could be night shift, it could be full twelve-hour shifts. And they're just not able to do that anymore. Two of them are not, so the two remaining. And actually, I just got one resignation letter from our, one of our part-time people that ends up July, and then she's going to be retiring for good. So that leaves one person. Um, he's already retired from a full-time job. He retired from Chesterfield Fire. That leaves him, that can actually cover more of her time. So we just don't, we just don't have the part-time people like we used to have, that would never say no.
Do you maintain a pool of part-time people?
We do. We have four of them right now, and that's all we have.
Okay, but you would, you would like to have a pool of ten, fifteen, or twelve?
I would like that.
Correct.
I, I, I very much would like that, but there aren't people that are willing to give us the hours that are required. And it's harder to train for a part-time position. Um, they can tell us anything that they want when we interview them. Yep, I can work midnight shift, and then we invest six months to a year in training, and they say, oh, no, I can't. Well, at that point, what do we do? We've invested almost a year in our training. So we're likely to take what we can get.
So you hired these two full-time people. You're anticipating that they will come out of the part-time pool that you're currently in for?
If that's, I guess if that's what it takes. I mean, I still would like to have part-time people. We have vacations that we have to cover, sick leave that we have to cover. So.
That's my point. I, I don't want to.
No, I do not, I really do not want.
We're gonna fix one problem, and then you're gonna leave open another problem, which you've already said you have. You can't, you know, get part-time people. So if I take the two people that are now part-time and I move them to full-time, then I've exacerbated the problem over here with part-time. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
I got you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
What is it?
Let me ask something to that. Um, it was recently brought to my attention, Thursday, actually, that some people don't really know what we do. They think we just enter a nine-one-one call. Well, yes, we do, but there are other things that we do as well, and I would like to elaborate on that a little bit. I don't think it's really fair of us to ask y'all to give us more, give us more, if you don't have a full understanding of what we do. So if you have time, I would very much like to explain that. If that's okay.
Yeah, good.
Sorry, I wrote something so I didn't forget. Not that I forget, I'm just getting nervous. What does a communication officer do? We serve as a vital link between the public and other public safety organizations. We are committed in professionalism and dedication. We are responsible for answering all emergency and non-emergency calls and for dispatching appropriate personnel. We are responsible for the day-to-day operations of the ECC by ensuring calls for service are dispatched in a timely and appropriate manner. We perform work moderate to extreme difficulty in receiving, processing, and coordinating law enforcement, fire, and EMS calls for service via radio transmissions and requests from citizens and other departments for agency and non-emergency services. We act as an after-hours answering point and referral for citizens with any needs not related to police, fire, and EMS, but various other county departments, meaning we get calls all the time. What time do I have court tomorrow? I don't know what time you're gonna have court tomorrow. You're gonna have to call the courts when they open. I can't answer that question for them. So it's not just the emergency calls we get. We also keep track of what PSO units we dispatch, the R units we dispatch, how many resources we have available in the county. There's, there's a lot more. So yes, I can tell you what we do, but it's really not, you have to see it, because it is truly advanced.
Correct, thank you. Um, part-time, what's the pay scale for part-time employees?
Um, I, I'm not sure what the scale is, but I know part-time babies, they start at nineteen fifty-nine. Yeah. Pull up an answer that question. Uh, starting officer would be a grade sixteen, which right now is nineteen fifty, midpoint being twenty-four thirty-eight, and that coming twenty-nine twenty-five. And like I said, we, we have been very, very lucky with, with the people that we have, and I just, I don't want to lose the ones that are still able to salvage. We can, we have people that have been with us for twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-seventeen, fifteen, and many with twelve years of service. And we're, we're a great group, and I just need to keep, I need to keep it going.
And I'd like to clarify, when we say part-time reduction, we're not, it's not proposing to get rid of all the part-time. That's just, they've said, they could do less.
You're offsetting.
Offset a little bit less part-time if they have these two full-time.
So we're, we're offering to give, to give.
Does anybody, just for the, ask the question, I guess. Are you trying to recruit, Bill, kind of not like this, from, from fire, uh, rescue?
Well, and I'm into that part of it, but we, we have some of our employees who would love to actively do that, but because of working for the county, somebody's gotta pay the overtime.
And we would end up, we have one particular person that really does want to come to work for us that is in fire. And because he's already a county employee, we would have to, every hour he worked for us, would be overtime.
What about a volunteer that's in the?
We have some. We have, right now, we have two full-time employees that are members, and one of them, actually, both of them are supervisors for us, but they are members of fire rescue.
All right, okay. Thank you. Right?
Next, we have Public Works. And Public Works will have two slides on it to expand upon their operational increases, but their total proposed budget is just south of three-point-two million dollars, an increase of roughly twenty-two and a half percent. Um, there is a personnel ask, a maintenance worker three or slash skilled worker with a starting salary of fifty thousand dollars. And, um, before we get to, uh, the majority of the increase, is there any questions related to the position itself?
What does a maintenance worker three do?
The work will be on the facility side of the Public Works office, and the goal for the business is to take a more of a proactive role in preventative maintenance. Uh, right now, it's, there's a priority put out, a metaphorical priority put out every day, um, so that, um, the main effect where the attention is focused, uh, the value in somebody that has the time to interact with all the workers on the asset is more of a preventative. I don't like, that would be the goal of the mission.
You're trying to buy the jack of all trades.
And ideally, somebody with some trade experience.
Right. And, uh, that's a maintenance worker three? Comes in at the same pay scale as, uh, Sheriff seventy?
Yeah, I think it's a two-thousand-dollar.
Correct, fifty thousand. You can buy the same pay scale? So?
It's a great fourteen. When Charlie says.
Okay. The maintenance worker three starts at thirty-six thousand. And the book that I have says fifty thousand, and then eighty-one thousand. The eighty-one thousand usually includes the bottom number. That fits. So is it fifty thousand or thirty-six thousand?
They are looking for someone that is coming in with experience, so they're thinking that we're not gonna find something to, to come in for, and say, so that they accept the salary.
Probably right.
Can I speak on, sure, that's what I do for a living, so you're not gonna find a way. What I do every day. Prevent the maintenance worker state, and all proven. Yeah. Good luck with that. But it's a need, it's, well, we need it, so. Like my maintenance guys.
All right. And that's a twenty-two and a half percent increase over last year. Did I hear that right, Mr. Bo?
Correct, primarily coming from their operations. Which we can extend upon in the next slide. There are no further questions regarding the maintenance worker.
One second, please, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox. Hey, let's go back to, what's changed? I understand you want to, what's changed? Wow, I don't necessarily understand why you need this person. So, I mean, is, is, is it a question, you want to do more, uh, and, or has something changed that requires this to happen?
Yes, I, I think that part of it, yes, is, uh, the added assets at Oak County's Landmark Center. Um, the added assets at the SCAG buildings, the free clinic have, have added some work. Uh, but really, it's, uh, the position is to, is to hopefully stop falling behind on some of the CFP, you know, preventative maintenance, uh, just day-to-day work. You know, ideally, the year that a CFP item would budget it is the year that it would happen. Um, and, and we're pretty, pretty good gap there, you know, and, and so the position is, is ideally to close the gap uh, to, to start doing the work in, in the years that, uh, the money's budgeted.
But CIP amount is supposed to pay, I thought, for all of it, not that we needed to add, uh, a worker from, from maintenance to make it work?
Yeah, and so I'm speaking specifically to the CFP items that the Public Works teams, um, you know, so.
They do theirselves.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, some more being, and not, not that we're not able to fund them or do them now, but, uh, things getting delayed and not able to get to them just because we don't have staff to get them.
So for Public Works, um, they have an operational increase of just over half a million dollars, which we've broken out, um, in the next five bullet points here. Two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars, um, is partly due to a CBWA contract increase, as well as to restore funding reduced in this current fiscal year. Um, that applies as well to recycling pools, the increased cost there, and to restore funding reduced in this fiscal year. And the rest are inflationary increases at fifty-five thousand dollars, um, additional services, um, for the village building, Public Works, as well as the free clinic, that's nineteen thousand. And then some operational costs, um, to set up the new maintenance worker three at five thousand dollars.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Um, this has no dollars in it for Convenience Center East at all, does it?
No, sir.
Okay, so that's at the whole different world. Okay, so the, the, uh, the recycling pools made holes, additional one-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand. We're really not doing more pools, are we? I thought we're kind of at the max of the tools we could do. So this is just a cost increases?
Maybe one jump on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the service isn't changing, and in last year's budget, the amount allocated toward this, and the budget was reduced, but what we're doing and the costs associated with that didn't really change, so we're, we're restoring the funding that, uh, would be needed to continue the existing level of service.
Okay, you almost lost me. So we underfunded it last year, but we still paid for it.
Correct, we didn't produce any services.
Okay. So if I were to look at that budget item, I would find that it's short funds, and then this, this fixes it this year. All right, thank you.
Okay, we're good, we're on?
Okay, thank you. So we have, um, Reg Char's office next, with an ask of three-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand dollars. We have Ms. Alexander over there. Um, it's an increase of seven-point-seven percent overall. Um, it's split between the personnel as well as some operational increases. Um, this upcoming fiscal year being a three-election year, um, Ms. Alexander proposes that we, um, raise the pay for our officers of election, as well as some increases for our electoral board and, and related operational increases due to it being a three-election year cycle. And she's here for any questions that you may all may have.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Um, I want to see Mrs. Alexander about her budget. My concern was to make sure, since the kind of elections we're having this year are critical, make sure we had enough money in there uh, to provide the kind of services she provided in the past, and so she feels, she feels comfortable where we're, we are where we need to be. Did I get that right?
Absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good.
The electoral board expenses will be reimbursed by the state. By the way, there's, there's a paying for these for them, and, and I just wanted to, uh, you know, hire them, but that does get reimbursed by the state.
Good. Thank you.
All right, are there any further questions or requests? Um, so next we have the sheriff's office. It is a total, um, budget of six-point-three million dollars, a roughly ten percent increase, split between personal, personnels, as well as some operational increases. There are four sheriff deputies being proposed in this upcoming budget, um, with a starting salary of just over fifty thousand dollars. That is, um, uncertified, I believe, separate.
That's not certified.
Still certified, my apologies. Um, along with those deputies, there are four vehicles that would be tied to those positions, and various operating setup costs for this position. Were there any questions for Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Tom.
Um, you, last year, did we take care of you with compression last year?
We took care of a lot of compression. The only outstanding compression issue I had with my chief deputy, um, we had, uh, started sometime ago, two, two county administrators, like maybe three, um, doing a program where, uh, and we were just talking about that with your, the grades. Uh, our people start off at, uh, grade seventeens, which is a forty-seven thousand eighty-three-dollar starting salary. Um, y'all approved last year to move that to that number, and then they go to a grade eighteen after they meet their certification and training, finish the academy. Now, because we're not really paying it, they're, they're not working, they're working when they're at the academy, but they're not of benefit to us in the county yet, so. And then it goes to fifty thousand for, for, so that is our starting salary after certification. So, so we also started a program quite some time ago, master deputies and master detectives, uh, that once they reach certain, uh, points in their career and vet training requirements and times of service, they were moved into recommendations for myself and supervisors into, uh, into that position, which included a ten percent bonus pay. Those benchmarks are, uh, I believe, three years and five years. But there, there are substantial benchmarks, uh, the detective ones, a ten years of service will they reach. Um, so, uh, the only ones we haven't done any benchmarks for are the administration, which is only myself, Jeff, and Danny, which is my chief deputy and my captain. Um, I had proposed last year, uh, with county administration, at the time that we start looking at adjusting that benchmark for a chief deputy and captain. And we would phase it in one at a time, not both the same year. Um, we're not asking for a ten percent one for him. It would be, um, more like a six percent. Um, I know we're getting ready to do a cop land. Uh, we're getting ready to do that study. I don't think that would really interfere with us if he, if cop land came, comes out, so he's adequately compensated, and there won't be a change. Uh, if it says he's not, then, then he's to do more. So, uh, the six percent prior, whatever raise, uh, the county decides to do this year, that y'all decide, um, I think would be a reasonable start, uh, with you there. I'd like to institute that this year. You know, I'll start with my captain probably next year. I do like to plan it, and I don't like to surprise y'all, so.
I know you had mentioned that to me, I'm sure other several years, you know. You know, well, I could.
But other than that, you kind of did a great job with, uh, compensation. Last year, we did address compression. Uh, these guys over here did a lot of work when, uh, their offices all looking good with compression. Um, salary increase last year was, um, eight years of the chair, that, that year was the, uh, best I've seen it done as far as addressing the depression and, uh, pay at the same time. So we solved a lot of issues back here.
Can you tell me how you got to four deputies? What was the kind of emphasis for that number?
The emphasis on the four deputies, I had four patrol shifts, and these are patrol positions. Um, there are twelve, they were twelve-hour shifts, um, and I wanted to add a deputy to each shift. Um, so like I said, there were twelve-hour shifts. We, last year, so, so numbers, we, we saw a thirty-seven percent increase in criminal arrests last year, a ninety percent increase in warrants served, criminal warrants, six-and-a-half percent increase in inmate transports. The school incidents increased by twenty-eight percent that involved us. Uh, there was a seventy-five percent increase in animals that were rescued last year, and, um, it, this is an interesting, thirty-seven percent increase in calls for service, just to Walmart. Uh, so we went to three-hundred-and-sixty-seven total calls of Walmart last year. If you notice, there are three-hundred-and-sixty-five days in a year, so we go by Walmart daily. And if they're open, we're there. Uh, so we are seeing a lot of that. We're seeing, uh, a, an increase in the mental health calls, which are very time-consuming and expensive, or else as a county. Um, I would like to add to Patrol Division, uh, eight years I've added one deputy. We had one deputy aboard back. Um, so about five years ago, we had one deputy to my total. When I came into office, there were forty-seven full-time unit ones, are now forty-six. Um, so we would be going to fifty, yeah, four. Um, I do recognize adding personnel is significant. I do recognize adding personnel is a significant cost for my health to spend. Just not just benefits. Not just the salary. We do have a lot of equipment that comes along with everyone. There's a, there's a vehicle involved. Foster uniforms gone up and equipment takes approximately about thirty five hundred dollars a person. No, excuse me. I've got the rifle and handgun here. About fifty two hundred dollars to dress them on their first year. So, you know, that's not counting cars and it's enough, nothing is cheaper. Everybody on this don't have one year, three hundred fifty dollars for this. So they have five year expiration date, but surrounding plates, five year expiration dates where we did one of our better criminal arrests, we, we received eighty, eighty two, was it eighty two dollars? All, all my has to go to the treasury, eighty three thousand. So we're going to be using some of those monies and our brand for purchasing that. So the reason why you don't see a real quarter, you know, seventy thousand dollars of body of murder this year. So we're going to be able to take care of that ourselves.
Could you possibly perhaps from four to three, and maybe we take care of the compression with your?
That would be doable. You know, I asked, I've never played games with you guys. We know that. We've always worked together that way. I've asked before. Three would be doable. I can do that. That would allow me to put the midnight shifts are, you know, you mentioned earlier ten to ten, but a lot of our businesses after dark. So I'd be able to add at least one more to each one of the midnight shifts at a bare minimum. And that third, third deputy would go in one of the day shifts. So I feel a lot side there, but that would also give me the opportunity to maybe pull my canine unit off the regular schedule and rotate her in between the shifts a little more often. Right now I'm only using the one canine. I've got one retiring here a week. So I'd be able to get that canine unit out that way.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sheriff, you're confusing. You need four?
I do, but I'm willing to work with you guys. Yes, sir. Yeah, our, our call volume is not gone or not gone down for certain. The biggest reason I'm asking for this year. And I, and I am willing to work, work with three, as Carmack mentioned. If you haven't noticed, we have the only area that I'm down is traffic tickets. Traffic signs. We broke less this year than we did the year prior. I'm very proud of my guys. They write in about a sixty seven percent ratio. So pretty good chance you can pull over out here and maybe not leave in with the ticket. But getting stopped is what's important to me, not so much the summons. But we're not working as much traffic because too busy making arrests. And I don't know if any of you follow social media, but one of the biggest complaints I've seen last year has been with their traffic issues around sixty, seven, eleven, about two. Unfortunately, every county in the state has had a huge increase in fatalities. Traffic related, we're not immune from that at all. Everybody's seen some of the more publicized ones we've had. I would like to dedicate a little more time to getting my guys back on the road. I know you're seeing it more because I get that phone call quite a bit from some of our citizens, but it's a good thing that you're seeing more, but I need to, I need to be able to have them actually work in traffic.
Sure. We have, how many school resource officers now?
We have four and a part timer. We did a grant. We, you and I talked about that at some length that we have not, we have accepted the money, but we have not spent the money. Because that position would be an official position. That the grant would be paying, we would have to make, make some matches down the road. Next year's would be the car that we would buy would be the county's match. So they're not going to purchase the car for us. And once we purchase the car, that would be our, we fulfill our obligation there. With, with the state grant and that's the governor's program that's going for the next couple of years. So we have four and a part timer. The part timer will be leaving. Eventually we need to want to go ahead and put a full, a full timer in there. Have quite a bit of difficulty finding part timers for one of our former RSLs to decide to come back.
You said, if I remember correctly, that the school incidents that you're involved in was about twenty eight percent? Yep.
Yes.
Yeah. Could you, I realize it's not part of budget, but we got you here. Could you, and what's going on in schools and a lot of ventures to all of us? Could you tell us what?
Well, it, it's been a disciplinary issue primarily if we're involved in it. It's been the twenty eight percent is probably less than what it would be. The last year they changed law, believe it or not, you cannot, they took the being disruptive out. You cannot charge a school kid with disrupting school. We used to. But now we can't. So they're disruptive things are going in school that we're not involved in because now they're not criminal. So I believe our normal would actually be higher, but it's been a real issues since this. Vaping is a big one down there. Not, the vaping probably comes to some of the drug usual hero because the vapes now they, they come in, they have the THC laced vapes and there are a lot of vapes, things like that. Seen an increase in that. And we have to take action most things. So school bus issues were down. Not getting into many fights on the school buses anymore.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
One question for you. Is the TikTok destruction calm down a little bit?
It hasn't. It hasn't. That was, you know, it'll be another, I hate to say this out loud, but it'll be another trend takes place. Oh, yeah. But yes, it has calmed down. Big issue now, and I'll say, our new superintendent, Mrs. Cian has been very helpful with it. She's been very supportive of deputies at the school. And I do appreciate her help. She is very, very supportive of SRO program down there. Actually recommended and helped us arrange some training we did recently with the active shooter training that we did with some of the teachers and will be one of them. So, yeah, the TikToks are good. I got one particular bathroom that we're being concentrating a little bit more on in high school.
I think that's good. I think you're thirty seven percent increase in criminal arrests, twenty eight percent increase in schools. You're going to lose some coverage in the traffic side of things.
Well, I do need to react to it. I would like to react a little more proactively than that happened.
I think so. You, you won't hear any problems from me. I mean, Palatine County thrives because of the safety in the school system.
And I will mention, oh, thank you. And I will mention the six percent I'm talking about for my chief deputy. Just to put this in perspective, this, this is a five thousand two hundred dollar number. This is not a ten thousand dollar pay increase or a twenty thousand dollar pay increase or anything like that. It's a it's to bring him up closer to, and this was mentioned the other day, Thursday, I believe, but practice, excuse me. Constitutional officers, no one in their office is allowed to make over ninety percent of what a constitutional officer makes. I would like to see Jeff closer to that nine, but we're not going to be able to do it all one year. And he's good with this and so on. And we'll bring him from the seventy seven percent where he is from me now to probably eighty, eighty one, maybe.
Is his six percent included in the true up salaries, Brett?
Yeah, no, it's not in that.
You don't have any problem with me on that one? I support that a hundred percent.
Well, I, I can't, the office runs as well as it does because of the workouts here it does. Strongest also that I've worked with my career, going twenty six years now, so. I don't think it's a big asset. I wouldn't like to do that. I do know there's been questions from last year's issues that want to make sure we are following also. And our following will do that, but I don't think there's anywhere in the policy that says that, as the sheriff, I can ask the people that control the money of this county to raise the salary regardless. At any time of the year. So I'm asking.
Mr. Chairman. A good sheriff would ask. And so I applaud you for that. You know, you keep your morale up and you keep your staff up and you do a very good job, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Carr. The ninety one percent of sheriff's salary. That's the maximum, not a, that's a maximum, not a target, right?
Not a target at any time right now. No, I believe that's something I would love to work towards, but I don't see this very easy.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carr.
Thank you, Sheriff. The next department we have is social, social services with a total proposed budget of roughly two point seven million dollars, a nine point six percent increase. There is a position request built into this as well, along with the seven percent raise break, broken out. Since it's under a different fund, the position asks is the domestic violence position with a starting salary of just under seventy one thousand dollars and it includes some operations for that position. And there are four position salary changes left promotions along with that as well. And that is due into part that the comp and class plan does not encompass social services.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Carmen.
The domestic violence position. Does that need to be a full time position? I mean, we have the workload for to for a hundred and seven thousand dollar increase, you know, because there's a lot of pressing needs. We have, you know, four deputies over here. Is that something, because I know historically, like I mentioned earlier, it was married up with another position. Could we still do something like that? As well as I know, we were working with Guchman, we were looking at having a nonprofit take it on. What I don't want to see is us at a position and not have a program going along with it.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think when this starts, this person, when they come in, will have plenty to do as they'll be having to get a program really off the ground, establish, you know, make those connections, get the right funding streams in place. Cause a lot of it, hopefully down the road will be reimbursed by the state. So it won't all be local dollars. As far as social media, how they do outreach, how they get this program known in the community. So to start it, I think they'll be quite busy. Now, once it's, once it's set off, then we won't really know until we see what the call volume is coming in. It's probably hard to gauge what that volume will be now because the calls we're getting are from people without a really robust known program in the community. So once that's known that that's a resource that's out there, I think we'll probably start to hear from more people that have a need than we are now. But you know, will that be a five percent? Will that be a two hundred percent? It's hard to say. So I think certainly once we get that and get that start going, and then also there could be an option for something regional or a nonprofit. So, so a lot of unknowns. But certainly if the demand isn't there for them to concentrate all day long, full time on this, then I think there are other things in the social service arena they could be doing or working on to hire or to fill it as just a part time. Certainly an option. I think then as one of the issues we might see is Ms. Schmidt commented on earlier is it's just hard to find people that want to do part time. But you never know. Sometimes we're really lucky. We get somebody good that's retired or semi-retired, has a great experience and wants to do it. But I could see that potentially being an issue.
Thank you.
But I can certainly talk with Ms. Carroll about that a little bit, can talk with her more about the option for going with a less than full time position, or if the needs aren't there, then what do we do? Where are the other needs that person could shift to or cover as well? And this, this, I'll just add one thing. This one too, the calls are not all eight thirty to five. A lot of these are after hours too. So that's another part of this where we can't, to do it right. We can't some, have somebody work part time. You know, just during the day, it would be an expectation that you're on call essentially twenty four hours a day. If somebody calls in crisis at three in the morning, this person would, would be expected to take that.
This is a question really that kind of goes to all of these positions. We have, we have the annual cost and annual benefits. And we're not, we're not going to have them for a year. How do we, how do we take all these numbers? Okay, it was a big number and adjust it to reality. Whether it's eighty percent or seventy percent, I mean, we're just we, we, first of all, we can't find the people from day one. That, that we know that. So we're not, even if we prove every one of these positions, we're not going to spend all this annual money. So I don't, I guess I'm looking for something that's closer to real.
I, I think it's hard to figure out what's going to be real because when we, July one, they post out there, they want to hire someone. If it takes thirty days, then
For six months.
But, but that's the thing. I don't think, I mean, right now we know the reality is it is taking that long, but I, I don't know that I would know that, okay, we put it out in July and we say, we're only going to give you six months worth, hoping that you don't find a candidate for six months. So that's kind of the, the part that I would struggle with is that if you don't, if, if you feel that you only want to fund this for six months, then we can do that for six months. But I don't know that I can bank on how much time it's going to take to hire someone for this particular position or another one. Some can have, can be easier to fill than others. Right now mine's not been filled and I'm, I'm searching, but I don't know. I'm not, I'm not giving you a very good answer, but I think that if you were to, to say, okay, now it's taken us six months to hire. So only put six months worth of salary in there. And then we posted July one or July fifteenth, and all of a sudden we actually have a good candidate in August that could start August one or August thirty first, and we've only funded six months worth. So I don't know what the right answer is, but it's really your call if you don't want, only want to.
I, I understand. New positions are worth one point seven pennies. Okay, one million four hundred and eighty seven thousand, six hundred and thirty four dollars as we got started. And so it's not going to be that expensive because we just can't move that fast. That's all.
It will be next year then, just.
And that's next year.
It will go there next year, so.
But I mean, all I hear is it's difficult to find people. And so I don't know what fudge factor you use, but certainly it's not a hundred percent. I don't have any real guidance. The way I just one more problem. Miss Wade.
Brad, if you're going to try to quantify a need, one place for you to start would be the hotline number. How many calls are coming in from Palatine County? You may also check with Heather Solomon over in Guchlin Cares, who's been handling a lot of their calls since last spring. She can both tell you and give you an idea about the calls from Palatine and also tell you what's involved in the creation and maintenance of a program. As Mr. Carmack said, when it was up and running, it was a part time position. In other words, you know, somebody in certain services was doing something else in addition to. That seems to make sense. Because that allows you the flexibility. If things don't go, we don't have the volume that we anticipate, then there's work there for the individual. And the same is true that if it goes the other way. It's, it sounds like a good place to start. I, I would try to quantify the need.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at that. And also when we, Guchlin, Guchlin Cares was a very good resource and they shared some of their volumes and numbers. Our populations overlap theirs in, in many ways. So I think that also gives us an indication of what it might, what it might look like. But these are some other good areas to look at. So yeah, I'll, I'll work with Ms. Carroll as well to see again, if, if the need or the volume isn't there, what are the, the things this person could work on as well?
How many cases did Guchlin Cares take care of for us last year?
Oh, for us, as far as I know, it was just the two where they Oh, for us, as far as I know, it was just the two where they requested funding assistance with the two. I'm not sure that, that was kind of what brought the issue forward.
Well, the two. Because if you remember the first, first time, you know, we found us, that was back in spring. I don't remember, but it was multiple, but. You're only going to get a snapshot in time when they started, you know, complaining that they couldn't serve. The overflow that they were getting from Palatine County. So that won't give you information about what happened in the preceding months.
Yes, I, I don't have those numbers. It was ultimately, I think, the two that brought it to. Maybe discussion, you know, we really need to start talking with them about that, but yeah, there, there were others.
Yeah, for some reason, eight's a number that sticks in my mind, but I'm not sure why. But I think there's definitely some type of. Issue there that maybe we do the, the part-time one. And I think even Guchlin offered. If we would pay a little bit to support them, they would. Run the program for some period of time, right?
Guchlin, we, we explored that and talked with them about it, and I mean, they didn't say absolutely not, but they had a number of, of. Concerns about being able to best serve us. So their recommendation was we do something locally that they just wouldn't have the connections with Palatine institutions that somebody here would. So it's. It's not totally off the table, but they had really said in their experience to look at doing it locally.
I would think in-house would be the right way as opposed to partnering up. But when you get to a hundred and seven thousand dollars, you know, their position maybe, Mr. Carmack's right. Part-time.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and we're, you know, we're, we're just starting this, so we'll, we can certainly start, start in that way and then see what this first year brings and what it looks like. I think whether, whether we do it part-time, full-time, we're going to be learning. Things are going to be changing, so it's, it's not the last time we're going to talk about this.
Right. Yeah, I think it's going to last. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, to add on to social services, we have a CSA. Within increase of three hundred thousand dollars, we thought to include this as a separate slide. In our conversations with Ms. Morris, the state has given her some information regarding expected increases in service costs. So she thought to appropriately budget it, the, the possible increases that she may receive in FY twenty-four, though she's not one hundred percent sure, just because it's projections given. Currently. Any questions? All right. So next we have the Treasurer's Office. With a total budget of six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, a roughly five percent increase. It's primarily coming from touring up salaries and benefits, insurance, any, any changes in positions. As well as some operational costs, including dog tax, posted and training. Would you have a treasurer known here? There any questions, Brett? Thank you. So we have utilities to finish our departmental discussion. With a total proposed budget of just over three million dollars, a twenty-seven percent increase, similar to the increases that you saw in Public Works. There is a, a position request, a utilities engineer with a starting salary of seventy thousand dollars. And the raise is budgeted separately as well. The majority of the increase is coming from the operational increases for a hundred and forty-five thousand. Dollars that we have displayed on the following slide. Before we get there, were there any questions regarding the utilities engineer position?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Carmack.
The utilities engineer. Are you looking at him? To stamp off on projects? What's the utility, utility engineer? Is he going to replace us going to? Newberry, Timmins, that sort of thing? I mean, what, what's the hope?
We have Mr. Melos, utilities director. He can speak to that as well, what, what he's been doing.
No, that, that is not actually, but as a matter of fact, most utilities typically don't stand off on, on their own projects. They still typically outsource most of those type of projects. The utilities engineer, we're, we've actually. Have only had two administrative staff on utilities. I've been here for ten years, probably on fifteen years. The number of plan reviews that we're doing as well as trying to provide some resiliency and redundancy. The utilities is kind of the driving factor with that. Currently, I, it's currently, there's just one person in utilities administration that. Does oversee the billing, planning. Operations, utilities also oversee solid waste as well, and we've thought of an additional convenience center. We can be adding additional work with there as well.
That convenience center, that doesn't look like that's coming on board real soon. We've been talking about that for four years now, or, yeah. So. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, yes, sir. Brett, don't you have some plans, reorganization plans that affect this position?
Yeah, and we've looking at potentially going back to Director of Public Works and adding that position in, which presumably that person would be an engineer. And speaking with Mr. Melos, would, would that cover the needs for this position? That would certainly help, but I believe. His feeling was that we're, whether it's this year or future year, we're going in that direction where the volume duties would still support or require. Eventually adding another engineer position in addition to or separate of the Director of Public Works that.
Well, I pointed out when we. Excuse me.
I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, sorry.
Pointed out when the decision was made. To go with a di- different organizational chart. Public Utilities from the former county administrator did what he did. And took. Ramona Carter's position. And turned it into a deputy position. I said then, you're losing the engineer for the county. And two. Now. You've increased the workload. Previously, the work was being divided up between Mr. Melus and Ms. Carter. With that departure of that position. Hundred percent of the work. Went to Mr. Melus. That's not sustainable. And we've seen that come to fruition over the last months. And it's come through here. So. I'm going to be looking to you, Brett. You know, for your leadership on how you think we can best, you know, resolve the problem.
Yep.
What type of engineer are you, Mr. Melus?
I, I am not licensed just yet. I can sit for my exam in the fall civil.
You're going for your PE exam in the fall? So in the fall, you could have the PE stamp. Best of luck.
But there are no further questions for the utilities engineer position. We can get into the operational increases. It's an overall increase of four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars approximately. This is also to restore funding reduced in this current, this year, including the Chester water capacity line. And other miscellaneous water and sewer expenses. That is about four hundred thousand dollars. And the rest are miscellaneous operating supplies and service accounts, inflationary related. At forty-six and a half thousand dollars.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cott.
So this is. A line item that was decreased in the twenty-three budget. And. Now it's being made whole. Is, is there, is there a water increase in Chester in here anywhere, or is it all just?
No, there's a five percent increase to the water, but this is the. I don't know the term, but it's for the, if. Capital recovery, if they do any capital repairs to the system, we are responsible for a portion of that. So it's on the schedule that Mr. Melus has in his office. And that's, that's the biggest part of that increase is if they were to do that repair, we are responsible for. About three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars.
But we don't know, we, do we know there's going to be an increase?
Oh, there isn't. The part of that three ninety-eight is the five percent increase for the purchase of the water.
Purchase of the water.
But the three hundred and some thousand is for if they, if they do the repairs, we are responsible for our portion of their scheduled repairs. And it's been that way every year. It just. Got. Removed last year.
What were all of my went? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Now I'm confused. Three hundred and ninety-eight thousand is for the purchase of the water or for the repair?
Part of it. Three seventy-nine is for the repair. The rest of it is the five percent.
Three seventy-nine is for what?
If the repairs are done, I believe it was Richmond City, it, you, Mr. Melo can explain this better than me.
Chesterfield County is contractually obligated to pay City of Richmond a capital recovery fee, depending on what utility C I P projects City of Richmond does. In our contract with Chesterfield County, we're obligated to pay, pay two point one two percent of the city. To Chesterfield County. Because we receive two point one two percent of their water capacity.
So that's the max it could be?
There's a, this, a scale based on their City of Richmond C I P. That's the most it can be for this fiscal year.
So it could be less than.
Yeah, and to clarify, it's. It's contingent on the City of Richmond performing those repairs.
Right.
Say the cost may not. Such as last year, they did not make that repair, so they did not incur the cost. But it's, it's something to budget for in case they, they do those repairs.
So the three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, we may not.
We might not, but I, I mean, I. I don't know. Mr. Melus probably doesn't have any more crystal ball than we do about it. They'll ha- do it, but they haven't done some in a while. Probably been a couple of years, so I'm a little scared they might actually do it, but. We are, we are.
The three seventy-nine is not a guarantee that they're going to go to. Richmond's going to do these repairs. It's a three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars.
It's our portion. If they, they do the scheduled repairs, we will be responsible for that.
Right. It's almost kind of like if you hired the employee, Mr. Cox, you know, when do we hire?
Yeah, but we're betting on Richmond doing maintenance.
Right, yeah, I'm not thinking that's going to happen at all.
Would be, okay.
There are no further questions. That concludes the discussion for the departmental budget review. We do have a C I P review after this, but. If there were any further discussions for the department budgets, we can have that now. So we can proceed along into the C I P discussion then. On the C I P discussion includes miscellaneous contributions as well as memberships that we'll start off with. We have a table of contents. Oh, sorry. We have the table of contents here. It should be in the same order as your C I P books in case you wanted to follow along, but we do have the projects listed out in the presentation. And to begin with, we have the miscellaneous contributions and joint memberships. We have listed here the requested amounts and then what we're proposing in this budget. Were there any questions regarding miscellaneous contribution?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cott.
Yeah, let's talk about Monica and stolen war. We budgeted forty-four thousand for them last year. And they spent eleven thousand.
They bill us quarterly, so probably by the time that, when was that full?
Uh, well, there's all kinds of dates. This is March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, I think that I'll have to get with them. They normally bill us on a quarterly basis and they haven't billed me for the second half, so.
So they, I mean, so they're actually, they're going to spend.
Yes.
The forty-four thousand.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that was last year. So the question was, they only spent a piece of last year.
Right.
Why do we want?
No, they'll, they'll, they'll end up billing me before the, before the year's out, though.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman. Did want to consider adding, this would be a better question for Brett and Roxanne. The, I forgot the name of it, the Central Virginia Tourism Board or organization.
Richmond Region Tourism.
Yes.
Yeah, we were.
I remember we were in it and then we got out of it. If we wanted to look back.
I think we were in like eighteen to twenty, a few years.
Yeah.
Prior, and that was something that I think we had some discussion about when you all came on, when you first came on about whether we should continue to fund it. I liked us being a part of it, thought it helped with our efforts for tourism and economic development, but then COVID hit and that was, you know, we had concerns about will there even be tourism for a while? So it came out, I believe it was funded in last year's budget.
No.
No, well, we haven't. We dropped it and we didn't pick it back up.
First year. COVID hit. Right. What they started funding with that regional tourism, okay, in terms of. They got very deep into the social world. They really did. And so we got out of it. Their real deal is social tourism. Which we don't get much of a benefit from because we don't have places for people to stay. People, places for people to eat. And so that's where they're spending most of their time and their success is, is on sports tourism. And so. Ms. Carmack, that's not a place I, I, I don't spend a lot of time, but it needs to be. We haven't looked at it two, three years, so that's, that's not a bad thing to do.
Just to see if it's changed, if it's going to bring, you know, revenue into the county, that kind of thing.
Yeah, we can, I, I can bring some more information and look into it. Again, we had not rejoined, but I, I was thinking. That request was in a prior year funded and we just hadn't actually joined, but I'll, yeah, bring some information.
And if we're going to go with. A, a little more emphasis still on parks and rec, you know, maybe that is a, a sports tourism avenue to go, being every. Team that I ever hear from, when I go to these tournaments, say that Palatine has the nicest ball fields of any of them they've been to. So, you know, it's a way for us to promote that. At least we're considering and looking into.
Naco is shown on the sheet that you gave me, Charlotte, it's not being funded. Is that just a question of when they bill?
We dropped that too.
Well, we dropped it, but we paid it.
Four hundred and sixty dollars, is that what you're seeing?
Yeah, four hundred and sixty dollars. We, we did drop it, but then this shows that we paid four hundred and sixty bucks for it.
Yeah, I thought so. That, that was one where we had previously been members. I know prior county administrators, some, I think. Used to more, some, some less, me being officially new to the role, thought that continue our membership, see if there's value in it. If there's not, that's something I would certainly recommend dropping. But again, having not been active in that, seeing what resources that gets us, I think that's why we funded it last year, but. Again, if there's not a real value there, then I have no interest in.
But Ms. Carmack, right, we dropped it.
Yeah, we did drop it. And then, but are we, but we did advertise on it for certain positions. So do you have to be a member in order to advertise on the thing?
Not sure. Some, some organizations, you have to be, some charge you if you're not, but we'll let you pay to do it. I. I'm not sure I have to.
Four hundred and sixty dollars, I don't get to work on.
There'd be a charge.
Chairman, one last thing.
Yes, sir.
Habitat for Humanity was for their, specifically for their paper and. Portion of Habitat for Humanity, where they were helping people who needed emergency repairs. Is that, do we have the same restrictions on that this year?
Let me see what they put in their request. I would assume that they, I'm making an assumption, I would assume that, that, that's what they, how they requested it before, that it would be the same, but let me. They're asking for ten thousand for their critical repair program.
Thank you. That's a good problem.
Great, there are no further questions. We can get into our C I P discussion. We have a ten-year overview listed here with. Some of our departments categorized. We list the current year. We list the current year or upcoming fiscal year twenty four, the totals for them as well as the ten year totals. And many of the following slides will kind of follow this same listing showing twenty four above and then ten years below it. Uh, twenty four C I P is total for twelve point two three six million with a total ten year C I P of eighty seven million. And we'll get right into public safety. Um, so we wanted to highlight before we get into the presentation, um, what each of the graphics mean. The top one only highlights the twenty four projects, but the the one below it, which is the ten year total C I P. Will also include the twenty four, just for a bit of clarity sake. For public safety, they have two C I P in this upcoming fiscal year. The first being the digital dashboard information platform and the second being the station alerting system. For total general fund impact of a quarter million dollars with a quarter million dollars coming in for grants for a total of half a million dollars. And then the rest of the C I P for the ten years is listed below.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Scott.
You've got a new format. It didn't work for me. I still, I I had, in order to understand this, okay, I needed to go back. To my budget book and the C I P and the ten year, so. Just in terms of how you put it out there, in order, in order to answer the questions I had, I had to go back to the other one, okay? So I realized you were trying to abbreviate the information. This didn't help, that's all.
Is it, is the two fifty a matching for that F Y twenty four?
It's actually not. I mean, we have a category that just is grants proper as other because otherwise it it. The format gets pretty lengthy in the C I P book. What this actually is, is we're the plans and we've discussed with, um. Tom Nolan that there will be, that this will wrap into his to make with the radio systems. We will be using, um, existing, the remainder of his bond proceeds to help fund the alerting system.
Is that the additional two fifty?
That's the two fifty, but it would be, it, we had to show it somewhere just so you could see what the funding was, but this would actually just. Move the money out of his project, which I'd bring a resolution for that and put it into. If you approve these projects.
Is what you're saying there?
No, the two fifty other is coming from bond proceeds. It's not general fund. It's already in the capital project for the radio system. And then there's two fifty from the general fund.
Right.
For the total.
So the grant is the bond.
Yes.
You're just showing it.
Yeah, because it's already been bonded, so I didn't want to show that we were going to issue bonds to do this. It's already, uh, because we can use. The way that bond works is whatever has not been used, when he's he's got some things he's finishing up. We can use it for something that's that's related to project in here. So this is all kind of the last piece of what they want to do to get the, um. L M R to its completion. And Chief Wonders here, if you'd like to ask questions about the.
That was the alerting system.
I didn't see you were sitting behind me.
These two projects have been, might be, so I'll I'll just speak on that to, uh, to the benefit of the board. So the alerting system, um, currently when we have personnel, whether they're at home, the volunteers are at home listening for a call or they're at the station listening for a call. Uh, our nine one one partners have to have a way to alert them that that call service exists. And when we introduced the new L M R, it also tested how we were going to do station alerting. We we have a system now which is, uh, is is working, but maybe not as reliably as we'd like for it to. So this alerting system that we're looking at is currently in use by, um, I would say probably. Close to a dozen of our regional partners, um, from Denver, Chesterfield, Richmond Airport and everybody else. And it offers some real benefits on our end and and we have partnered into this with the communication center. Had involved in these discussions, which will do a couple of things. And essentially what happens now, I'm gonna oversimplify this just for explanation. Is somebody calls nine one one. The caller says, I need a fire truck in any name, or whatever the case may be. The call taker is entering that information and it gets sent to the dispatcher. Dispatcher has to verify that the information is right, the recommendations are right, things like that. And then manually go through and alert everybody that that call exists. Uh, what this new system will do is essentially is that information is being passed along to the dispatcher to monitor what's going on. There'll be a standalone computer that will grab all of that information as it goes through and automatically read it. And when I say read it, I mean that both figuratively and literally. And what will happen is that, uh, using voice over internet protocol or voice, that information will automatically go to the facility. Without having to have the dispatcher actually read that physically, read it off the screen across the radio. It's it's doing that as the call is is being entered, so it's real time. Uh, it's gonna save us, uh, based on what the other jurisdictions have found, about forty five seconds of response times to get after getting the vehicle to get on the road. Uh, the other thing that it does, it has built in redundancy. And so if there's a radio failure, we still get all that information on screens, uh, in the firehouse. But we also get it onto our cell phone for real time. So, um, it it's going to kind of take us out of what is pretty much getting close to reaching the end of life as far as technology is concerned. And and put us where we need to be with the modern technology.
It's a text message.
No, it's more than a text message. And so what it does, it it actually, so when we go in, if if we, if this gets funded, we go into an agreement with the. Learning company, what they do is, uh, they spent several months working with communications center and our CAD system, how it works, everything that it does. And gives us a lot of the features that the dispatchers have, so it will have, it will, uh, interacting with G I S. So we'll get real time mapping, we'll get real time vehicle location, things like that, uh, on the ability through an app on the phone. So, um, it's it's cheap operators, it'll give us that situation awareness, but.
Do that through a link? You have to like go to a link?
No, no, it comes up live. It comes up live and and the 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 nice thing about it is that. Um, because all of our regional partners are using that is that we can actually establish, uh, a connection with Chesterfield, let's say. So when we call Chesterfield, we get all of their call information, we get their hybrid locations, we get all of that vice versa when they come to us.
Right, right. What's the system you have now?
So the system we have now. It's complicated the way it works and I'm not trying to cover anything, but essentially, uh, how it works is the dispatcher now gets that information. And let's say three car companies are are due for a call. They use their touchscreens and, uh, the computer goes through. And what it does is it basically every. Our house has a channel that's assigned to it and so their computer will open that channel when. The receiver of the firehouse recognizes that channel has been opened, it says, oh, I assume there's a call here. Uh, the problem that we have is is that it's essentially using the same pager that you may see the volunteers wearing on their hip at the mall or, you know, anything like that. It's essentially just one of those pagers that's sitting in a crate waiting for that call to come in. And and there isn't really any redundancy to it. If that pager breaks or or there's an issue with the antenna attached to it. The the only redundancy we have at that point is that we hope that we get a text message on that. Uh, that that part of it is through. Uh, one of the other issues is that there isn't any automatic notification. Uh, back to the communication center if there's a failure in that, whereas, uh, this nuisance will provide instant feedback. So if at three o'clock in the morning, communications is lost with volunteer rescue spot across the street, the dispatcher will instantly know. There's an issue here and if I get a call in the next few minutes, I probably gonna have to pick up the telephone because I know that the radio system won't do it.
Hey, we're all through with public safety. And we have public works. We have a number of projects where it's upcoming this year totaling nine hundred and ninety three thousand dollars from our general fund. Um, and grants slash C B T A make up, um, three point three million for a total of four point three million. We do have, uh, Mr. Melis and Mr. Haiti here for any questions related to other works and there are many, um, projects they have upcoming.
Mr. Chairman.
Fair question for you of the county magistrate or. I've looked at the budget book for the C I P and I've looked at the presentation. Is there a summary page for all projects showing not just the dollar amount of the ten year period, but the funding source break up for the eighty seven? Is that, it's, we used to have a cover page, you know what I'm talking about?
In the presentation or in the in the C I P book, it's page three.
Page three.
Yes, sir.
Are you referring, is that for all projects?
Yes.
Or usually we'd have some kind of a picture image and then the description and then below that all the funding. If that's what you're referring to, then that would be in the C I P book.
My next question is for Cheryl.
Yes, sir.
Where do bond proceeds live in the budget?
Existing in proceeds or?
Existing, you you've mentioned earlier.
Well, it's in the capital projects fund, okay, there is no revenue source anymore. It's just whatever remaining is in. In the capital projects fund.
From the capital projects fund, the capital project fund resides in that undesigned fund balance?
No, it it's those fund balances are. So when I present to you your undesigned fund balance, it does not include the capital projects fund because it's a committed.
And we got the undesigned fund balance fifteen percent. Where are the capital projects? Is that another cohort outside of those?
Yes, it is. It's a standalone fund that automatically, based on our appropriation, resolutions, reappropriates following year. For projects that have not been finished or, so those bond proceeds that are in there, that for those projects. Whatever balance is left for that project to keep going, just automatically reappropriates. And the cash is separated in a separate restricted cash accounts.
How long can the, uh, bond proceeds reside on spin?
Apparently we still have some from our twenty sixteen and we do arbitrage calculations every year and we have not had an arbitrage liability. Um, I have communicated with the trustee, they're just looking for when a completion date, which I had spoken to Mr. Nolan about. And so they just need to know when the completion is gonna be. Um, I don't know that we have any. Timeframe on it as long as we're continuing to spend them down and you don't get into arbitrage, which we have not had that situation, so.
So, so people understanding what arbitrage is, if you borrow money at a certain interest rate. And then you go and invest that money and you get a higher interest from.
Correct. Then you have a liability.
Then you got a liability.
And we we do not have an arbitrage, uh, liability.
Because when we went and borrowed money in twenty sixteen, rates were.
Yes, but they're not anymore. Not anymore.
That's right. So we haven't.
And and we and we have had arbitrage calculations on the twenty sixteen. We've not been in any kind of, um.
And we have a penalty.
No, sir.
Okay.
What's the dollar amount that we have that's outstanding in from these bonds, all the way back to twenty sixteen? How much is that?
How much did we borrow?
No, no, how much do we have that's left over?
Uh, twenty sixteen.
All the way up to total, the total amount.
I I don't think I quite understood your question. So what's left over from twenty sixteen? Well, we didn't issue anything in twenty seventeen.
Twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen, we still have money left there, twenty eighteen.
The the total amount that's left over.
It's about three hundred thousand left in twenty sixteen. Which between the remainder of the few things that I know Mr. Nolan's doing, and if you approve for the alerting system, that will take care of all of that money. The easier funds for cash accounts. Snap has a little more, or twenty eighteen has a little bit more. Just have to find my right place. So as of. The end of February, when I did the last bank, when I got the last bank statement, so a little less than two point one million is still in there. Which we do.
Pretty substantial amount.
Right, but we still have a big part that's East Convenience Center is part of the twenty eighteen.
Yeah, I just seen a million dollars right here.
Well, that Carter Galler, that million is actually, I was gonna clarify that. We put it in other because it's existing C B T A money that we already have. We were trying to balance the two point one we're anticipating getting. Is to use that first and then we talked about how we're gonna handle the rest of the Carter Galler. We just, we're gonna start with the money that we had existing, um, and then.
We borrowed one point seven million for Carter Guy, for the for the Eastern Convenience Center. That's what we bought, one million, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. We spent eight hundred nineteen thousand or pretty close to that on the property, maybe with a little bit more than that. Um, so we should have a pretty substantial amount left over. That's the, how much is left over is where I'm going and then.
Over in cash, but I I would have to go through to find out which projects, there are a few projects. That are done, that we need to either reallocate those, we can reallocate those funds to another project. Or pay ourselves back for debt service. That's allowable. You can draw down the money and reimburse yourself for debt service. Yeah, you can. Through bond proceeds. But I have.
One more time.
You can reimburse yourself for the debt you've paid on that bond.
Right.
On the twenty eighteen. Remaining proceeds instead of paying it, turning. I guess returning it, um, sorry, I got distracted on where I was going, um. I do have a bonded, I'm just trying to. Most of the twenty eighteen, there's some stuff that's not been done. We still have money left in our E R P.
You're you're reading my mind now. The 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 E R P, there's funding, and then I'm gonna get to to the to the COVID money. Money that's left over there.
And we are proposing to use some of that. For one project.
What?
Hope House.
That's two hundred thousand.
Correct. I mean, that's all of that. Again, this is the board's decision as to what they want to use. There's one point six million dollars remaining in the ARPA money. Add that up too. I knew that was gonna be. One million, six eighty seven, one ten and fifty cents.
Take it back on this conversation a little bit further. If you could. I would like by fiscal year, the amount of bond proceeds that we have left over. And a third column, it shows if there is something that we have already indicated that we're gonna use it for. What it is and the amount. And I would like for you to do that for each fiscal year, with those three pieces of information fiscal year. Amount of bond proceeds left over today and if there is project or projects that have been designated to go against. Those proceeds. A broker, broker of the projects worth a dollar amount.
C I P right now, the only one that I had, that we have recommended using the remainder of a bonded project is the radio system. Or the learning system.
Right.
The rest of it I have not recommended. That is something that. Yes.
Okay.
But I will, I will get this to you.
Mr. Chairman, okay. Hold on one sec, Ms. Carmen.
Uh, two questions. The, looking at the grant C B T A, the one million for the Carter Galler extension for East Convenience. What is that? When you say, are you looking at the whole road, the road going to the convenience center? What is that?
Yeah, that would, that would be for extending it from the existing to, uh, the convenience center. Really, we we were looking at doing it as a whole road, so that was taking some of the existing C B T A funds we have. Uh, paying some of that cash and then looking at recurring C B T A funds as it gets built out to extend it. So, uh, that would be just the, some of the C B T A funds we already have. It wouldn't be saying it's only a certain section of it, say Carter Galler. Uh, South Creek Current to the entrance to the convenience center or the whole thing, um, the road would cost more than that. This would just be a portion of it, but not necessarily a specific portion.
That the, I don't mean, it doesn't really make sense. You said it's not really for a portion, but it's not for the money for the whole thing or a portion of it.
Clarify, if you look in the ten years, um, the second graphic at the bottom, Carter Galler extension is the last one. Uh, for total, it's a total project cost of five million dollars. So I believe we thought, uh, we'd be starting it, um, possibly. So a portion of the cost will start in F Y twenty four.
Correct, so then we would only a portion of the million from our C B T A funds would be starting in F Y twenty four. And then the rest would would go forward and be repaid with those C B T A funds over time.
Did we agree to that for our C B T A funds? I thought we for the three projects for C B T A was Trent Home. Holly Hills and Route thirteen and sixty, it was, I could be wrong, but I thought that was what we agreed on with our C B T A fund.
Yeah, as far as the first three priorities and then to uh if we are to extend Carter Galler as part of this project and not use all of our C B T A funds upfront. Um, we were thinking we would borrow for that over ten years and then pay roughly five hundred thousand a year uh. On that debt from C B T A fund.
Okay.
As well.
And one other thing, I don't know if this would fall under public works or I'm thinking it's gonna be Parks and Rec, nevermind, I'm disregarding, thank you.
Mrs. Cox?
Yes, let's go back to. The whole uh two thousand eighteen bond. Now we show. Projects where we haven't spent the money. We also have projects where in order to make it work, we had to put general fund dollars in. Uh, to the tune of some three hundred thousand dollars. So before you end up with any money that's not spent, you've gotta pay the general general fund back, okay? So um. Different projects, some of them were funded completely, some were not, but I think it's about three hundred thousand dollars plus uh. General fund dollars in that whole two thousand eighteen bond. And you can go on her finance page and she updates it orderly in terms of where all of those bond. Uh, projects are and the money that's been spent and the money that's uh from general fund in there. But in fact, when you start talking about savings for all of the projects, you you got to pay yourself back to the general fund first.
When was the C V T A million dollars? When did the board approve that? I I don't remember that at all. The the million dollars that's in here under F Y twenty four, that's C V T A for Carter Galler Extension for Eastern Convenience Center. I don't remember voting on that.
That's what this is.
Did we ever bring that out?
No, it's just proposed in the C I P, but you haven't, you haven't approved it. Now, and that that would require approving a project itself first, so that's still an unknown as we're evaluating the convenience center P P A and how we do that, but assuming. Uh, if we do go forward, this is planned programming and some money this way for it.
So you're kinda, you're asking us to approve a million dollars for C B of C B T A money for Carter Galler Extension. To a P P A, E P E A plan, it's not even been approved.
Correct, or maybe maybe earmarking it, not approving it, certainly if it doesn't go forward that way, or or we wanna approach convenience center Carter Galler a different way, then then. That C B T A funding would go towards something else or not used.
Where is the the five million dollar that Mister Bo just brought up? Under the bottom of the ten years, where did that five million dollars come from? Is it just an arbitrary number?
Yeah, yeah, so that was uh us assuming that around five million might be a reasonable portion of that project for uh road completion that we could dedicate C B T A funds. Towards, um, but it is uh until we have a final. Budget on that project and see uh what the board does with it, uh we wouldn't have a final fixed uh precise number.
Do you know when we're expected to get a final? Proposal from the P P A?
I'll have to check and give an update, the working group met on it uh and had a few additional questions uh and changes they wanted to see to the layout of the design. Um, so they've been sent back to the applicant.
Okay.
But I'll have to find out an ETA for when we expect those comments, uh and finally, those will be received back.
Okay.
Is everyone good?
Yep. Okay, thank you. So next we have Parks and Recreation, um, there's three total projects for Parks and Recreation, the first thing, the athletic fields, um, A D A improvements. Then some various furniture fixtures and equipment improvements and then um some trail renovations and improvements as well. For a total F Y twenty four general fund impact of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. With a four hundred fifty thousand um coming from.
The federal.
The federal government. Um, and for a total F Y twenty four cost of six hundred and seventy thousand dollars and listed below. Are um every project in the ten years to make the four parks and recreation.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Cox.
Um. The trail renovations and improvements, Brett, you sent out something this morning on the covered bridge, does a hundred and sixty five have? Let cover the new, the new bridge in parts.
The bridge we were actually doing, so I am bringing to you guys, which you haven't gotten your agenda yet, but we, I am. Bringing a resolution to you for your Monday meeting where I am cleaning up some of the C I P projects that are either. I don't know how to explain it, some I had a few of them unappropriating, one of them was for uh some school stuff that I thought. We've done better with the new administration communicating what funding sources are asking from us, what's from theirs, and so there was a project in there at the high school that they paid for last year. Some unappropriating those funds, um, so we're we're bringing up to you with all of that, with C I P changes to go ahead and put sixty five thousand towards the. Covered bridge because um. I think there's been a lot of citizens and people who would like to see that bridge reopened versus waiting until July one to start working on it and that. Um, so you'll be getting a resolution to use some of the savings of projects that we're closing out of C I P to put in board.
One sixty five doesn't have the covered bridge in it, you've got, and you've got other money to do the covered bridge.
Yes, sir.
Something he knows ninety to a hundred and fifteen, cause I know I've gotten a lot of calls on that.
Which they already have fifty that they that was in the C I P last year that they're planning to use. And then we're bringing Monday night sixty five thousand more to get that started, get going, so we can get it reopened and.
Good, okay.
Uh reinforced.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Carmen.
Um, Community Center, we had talked about that last year, this year, I know three and a half of us, it seems, wanted to see that, but I don't see that, and I'm assuming that would be under Parks and Rec.
Yeah.
I don't see that anywhere.
That was five hundred thousand in F Y twenty three C I P, right, my funding is still there, um, that was one of the things that. Prac wanted to discuss with the board, I believe they were looking at uh recommending or seeing if you are interested in doing, I think some kind of feasibility study. To see what that should look like, um, how to best serve it, what the needs are, so uh that's something that Prac wanted to to discuss with you all at the workshop. So, but there is five hundred thousand currently in F Y twenty three C I P still uh sitting there for that.
Should we add that to Parks and Rec?
It was, it was previously approved, so it's um, it wouldn't exist in the twenty four general fund.
Correct, but it would exist below it with the.
Well, the ten years from twenty four to thirty three, so anything prior to that in your, in the actual C I P book, there's a prior year. And the community center is on there with the five hundred thousand, so we were just focusing on twenty four and twenty four to thirty three in this presentation.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I'm sure.
Carmen, I can finish.
Yeah, done, thank you.
And so that's the same thing for the Trail Master Plan?
Yes.
Which had five hundred sixty five thousand in twenty twenty three, but we don't, we don't see it in in the in the twenty four.
Right, cause those are previously approved projects.
I didn't know whether that money just evaporated or.
Oh, no, sorry, it's in the C I P fund.
Okay, thank you.
Um. What about the seven hundred and fifty, I believe it was a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant?
Yeah, four fifty of that year is that for the A D A, and then the other three hundred was being for the uh the. Or the uh bathroom, I.
Yeah.
Part of my uh resolution on. Monday will be to take the money, we put the three hundred, originally you guys had put three hundred thousand towards the bathrooms. Out of the general fund because we didn't know about this grant and that this would qualify. So I am moving that source from use of fund balance to a federal grant, so that restores some of your capital maintenance reserve money in twenty three. So that will.
Puts three hundred thousand more dollars into uh the pond, doesn't it?
It puts, it gives it, so I'm just changing the sources, so right now we had used capital maintenance reserve to do that bathroom, but now that we have a federal grant.
Yeah.
I'm putting the money back into capital maintenance reserve and putting a federal grant in its place. Yeah, I won't even have to read my resolution when you get to it, well, covered it all.
Okay.
So that, between that and the A D A bathrooms, that's the seven fifty, so and.
So.
The A D A improvements.
I appreciate that, thank you very much, um. Anything that we previously approved. For F Y twenty three, as Mister Cox brings up, the the master trails, as Miss Carmack brings up, the community center. Can we get a list of that that we can see that's already been approved, so we can follow that and track that?
Continue, book, is it in the book?
Yeah, I have looked at the book.
It didn't go forward. Oh, it's from, so it's it says twenty twenty three, but it has nothing beyond that, but it's listed.
It's still listed in there.
Still listed, same thing, okay, community.
We tried to make sure we put projects back, uh, we we added the prior year column back in, um, Mister Cox asked for that, which I'd always always done it that way, but um. We had to squish it all in for ten years, but but if a project is still ongoing or hasn't happened, it may be in there with blank for the rest of the years, but you still have. The project in there, if it's completely closed out and we're done and we try not to. Remove them because then your book might get this big, but um. But I do have a list, I do, it's called a, uh, I do a tracking spreadsheet as well as the C I P fund, that it's all appropriated in there and. Um, happy to share anything you might want to see, okay?
Shouldn't have all this, if you look.
It'll be as a, I usually do it all at the end of the month to get capture the whole month, so I can. It would be as a February and then.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So next we have a public utilities, they have one project for F Y twenty four, the Finding Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant upgrades for two hundred thousand dollars. Um, there are two and included with the Finding Creek, uh, there's water distribution monitoring control and and out here. Do we have any questions for public utilities? Okay, thank you. So next we have the school C I P, um. The school C I P, they have a few different funding sources, some of which include um their school operating as well as um our general fund. Grants debt and the school's capital maintenance reserve. Um, there are a number of projects listed here of which the school have um previously presented on, were there any questions regarding any specific? School C I P?
Mr. Chairman, yes, sir, Mr. Cox, let's go straight to the buses. Now, they tried to turn that into a um. A miscellaneous uh spreadsheet, um. And it's where we had debt, and we're not gonna have debt apparently because they're getting the buses. So. So I I guess the question is, why do we have nine hundred and twenty six thousand dollars in F Y twenty four debt, which would be leases?
Yes.
Uh, when in fact, um. So then I go, we're not gonna lease those buses, is what I understood.
So. Uh, Mister Sheridan and I met with Dr. Tiggen and Debbie Holloway about this, because I was confused on the memo as to what they were requesting. So currently they have about a million fifty seven left over um of the current buses that were given to them before we knew about the electric buses. That's.
Million from from where?
Twenty, from twenty, what was appropriated them in twenty three.
Okay.
So they're, they don't need that for buses because they're getting these electric buses. They do need two hundred and eighty two thousand of that for the air conditioners, the camera system and the required extended warranties. So we sat down with them with all of these listed things and it's like, you know. What are you requesting? So I'm still getting some information on a couple of projects that they need, some of the projects they were talking about in here are ones they're asking for in twenty four. But they wanna come to the board and ask to accelerate those because there's safety concerns. Um. Well, they already have the the radios for the part, part of it's already been done for the radios. For the buses, but they wanted to add seventy to do the offices, the central office, the transportation garage. Um, so it's actually gonna come to be two fifty one, so. The the extra money they would need would be something they would be saying, instead of asking for you to fund it in twenty four, we just wanna use what's remaining of these buses to get these things done. Quicker. Um, they have some uh vest, the the ones I don't have estimates on yet is. So currently at the high school, I don't know if you've been there, that's what they did last year is a vestibule where it forces visitors. Supposed to be to go into the office, but the way they built it, you really can just walk right in and. You get buzzed in, you walk right past the the office, so they're trying to fix something to force, they wanna put something there to force you into the office. And at Powatin Elementary right now, you can walk right in and just walk right past the office and just keep on going, so they're trying to do. Vestibles there to, for safety to force. You to have to go into the office, like I know the the middle school, when you come in the first set of double doors, you can't get through the second set of double doors, you have to go in the office and come around. I don't have estimates on those yet, they're trying to get those, but these are things that this is what they explained to me, cause I was confused on what they were, what they were trying to do. Um, the speaker in the auditorium right now, which is in twenty four C I P. They would like to get the money to do it now because apparently if there's a lockdown and there's kids in the auditorium, they can't be told there's a lockdown, but speakers don't work.
Mr. Chairman.
So these are just what things she expressed.
Mr. Captain, uh, Mr. Williams.
Starting with their budget.
Mm-hmm.
I'm confused because this is another discussion, but I'm gonna have to get clarity of. What was in their budget being proposed and why isn't? Because. I love that meeting, you know, the night with the school board being confused by what was in, what wasn't in. As Mister Cox pointed out, we had two sets of numbers. At night, what we had ourselves and what they presented was two different sets of numbers. Initiatives, I'm still confused about what's in the budget today, what that budget looks like. So I need clarification, I'm saying you're trying to help us, you know, with the meetings.
Right.
And just like with the C I P. If they're planning on using the funds that we set aside for twenty three, the million dollars for the leases, and they're gonna be using them for air conditioning, whatever. We need a white sheet, something to go with the C I P that corrects what I have here in front of me and explains it, because right now, I can tell you. Nobody really understands, it's kind of like it's in the playoffs.
So, so. I agree.
I want to see it itemized, I don't wanna say, well, it's for these types of things, I wanna see it itemized with a dollar amount.
And I was working on that and I was hoping to have it for today, but because he didn't wanna rush his, the people he's working with on getting an accurate estimate for the vestibule at the elementary school. I haven't gotten that yet, but I I will, as soon as I have it, I will send that spreadsheet.
That's all I'm asking.
And I even tried to designate what would be something that's not even in the C I P, but that had just come up in what was in the twenty four. And then that'll come out of twenty four, so once we know that it'll all be corrected.
Morning and lighting so that I can look to it and understand it and then make my own decisions about the efficacy of whether it should be there or not.
And I did have a discussion with them that um. The way that I'm used to doing this, because all this money is sitting in a project called School Buses. But if that we needed to move it out, it would have to be done by resolution by the Board of Supervisors to unappropriate from the school buses and add it to. These other projects and they understood that, um. So we are working with them to get the information, but I think one uh one thing about this is. It will free up some of the other, whether you approve it or not, if you approve it, then it will free up some of their twenty four asks that won't be asked, so we have taken care of it in twenty three and it'll be. Done and move forward.
They'll take this, for example, under the buses, the million fifty seven that's there. F Y twenty three leftover funding.
But they would still be.
Use that and separate it, and then they ask for F Y twenty four is gonna decrease.
Correct, but it won't be in the bus area.
Says, they just kinda go all go together now. You don't know if it's twenty three, twenty four, where the money's coming from, where it's going to or anything.
Right, and yeah, I mean, I'm not, so we will, as soon as we get all these updates, we can update the schools portion of the C I P, because there's been some other projects, what I think you touched on later, that. Some, there'd be a few more changes for the, I say for the better, so. The Powatin Elementary School H VAC program, they've been telling you guys, we did the grant, which was seven fifty, we matched seven fifty. And they were told the estimates were gonna be much higher, they've gotten their bids in, it is lower, but now the P L C needs H VAC work, so. We were proposing that one million that's in there. This is grants, profits, others, that's their school construction money that the state gave them, that they have not spent any of that because they haven't asked to spend any of it. So that million for for the elementary school will be taken out of that and shifted to. What they need done at P L C H VAC, they thought they could do some mini splits for ninety thousand, but now they've been told that's not gonna take care of the problem. Um. And then, you know, so, so we're gonna get all, this will change, we're just trying to get all the estimates in place and get the discussion over with the vestibule and that will be updated and we'll make sure we get that to you. With those funding sources, most of the funding sources won't change, but they will make a ban, well, I shouldn't say it, they will go down.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carmen.
Uh, six hundred thousand for Pocahontas Landmark Center, what is that?
That is to tear down the wings.
So is that other part is gonna get totally bad?
But they're recommending demolition.
Mr. John, yes, sir, Mr. Cox, um. I want to go back through this one more time.
Okay. But it's.
We showed nine hundred in F Y twenty-four, we showed nine hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in debt, this is leases for buses, which are not going to happen.
No, they was, so the ten buses that they're getting is replacing the ten that they're gonna do, and they were, want to use that million fifty-seven in cash to do other safety projects, so then they're gonna buy ten more buses in twenty-four.
I understand that. Here's the list, okay, that they've rolled into buses. A new camera system and bait noise detectors for the high school, under ninety-four thousand. Bait and noise detectors for the middle school, okay. Uh. Replacement of the sawdust collection system for the wood, wood shop at the high school, forty K, updated fire control system with P L C, and three vestibules at Powhatan High and Powhatan Elementary School. These all may be, I mean, this is, they've rolled all of this in and called it buses and they all need to be very separate.
Well, and that's why I, I met with them because the, um, that was if once I get all the estimates, I would bring a list to you and say, is this something you support? If it is, then we'll have to do a resolution that unappropriates from school buses and puts it in these other projects.
Yeah, let's go back to the, the electric school buses, they were gonna buy an F Y twenty-four um, eleven buses, right?
Yes.
Okay, and they're not gonna buy them anymore?
No.
Okay, and the way in which we will fund those was with debt, so there, if there's no.
No, 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 no. It's twenty-three's buses, twenty-three's monies. They're getting, not gonna be using their twenty-three's money, not twenty-four.
This says F, F Y twenty-four depth for buses.
Correct, but the ten electric buses is replacing what they were gonna buy in twenty-three, they haven't bought any buses in twenty-three, well, they bought one, they had to buy one.
Right, okay.
Um, it's, so it's replacing what they would have bought in twenty-three, so that frees, let's say frees up, they have cash that is unspent on buses and they would like to do some other safety thing.
Okay, so the F Y twenty-four, nine hundred and twenty-six thousand go the way, becomes zero.
No, that's ten more buses.
About ten for every year.
In outside twenty-four buses. You've got the electric buses and then regular diesel buses.
I'm just, okay. Our commitment to green energy is only by year.
Sure, I meant to ask this question, I would like to know what's in the capital maintenance reserve fund?
Mm-hmm.
And the applicability of being these other things? If they're potentially looking to put in the capital improvement plan, could they be covered by any money that's around the capital maintenance reserve fund?
Are there, they are capital maintenance reserves or are capital maintenance reserves?
There is.
Um.
They don't have.
They don't have a whole lot, but there is, um, so that, so the.
Use of bonuses last year.
Well.
No, let me finish.
Sorry.
Let me finish. Last year, year-end money that was gonna be going to the capital maintenance reserve fund was used for bonuses, that's a fact. It never made it to the year end because money was taken out and calculated to give bonuses for the second year in a row. It's a fact. So what I'm looking for now, is there any money left in the capital maintenance reserve?
There, there's not very, I, I have this a little over two hundred thousand right now, but on that same resolution that you will see on Monday, the they now, they're now not going to apply for the grant to do those preschool classrooms at P L C, so they had a two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar match to that grant, so I'm unappropriating that and that will go back into their capital maintenance reserve because that's where we pulled it from to do the match to the grant, so they'll, so they're gonna have some, but it's not gonna cover everything that's in.
Sure, I'm not looking for them to cover everything, what I'm trying to do is be truthful and pick off projects, now just found out they're two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. You know, if I can cover even one of the things that they've itemized, that Bill just went through, why wouldn't I want to be looking at it for the transport?
And we are recommending, um, I'm trying to see, there's some, and at, at the P L C, some of the, a few of the things they're gonna do there is gonna come out of capital maintenance reserve, I can tell you what that is because they have a more detailed, so, uh, a new fire alarm system, but if, if that is one of the things that they want to pull out of the school bus money, so that would not be used to, so you could put something else in that from that capital maintenance reserve, um, they have also, we've also designated, we designated about two hundred thousand dollars right now of projects that come out of their capital maintenance reserve, not ours.
That's what I'm looking for.
But.
I, I.
If they have more, we can revisit and look at.
I just want that.
Yes. I do try to look at them.
I'm not talking about you, I'm talking about us, you know, I need.
Right, and, and, and I worked really closely this year with Debbie, trying to also ask them, like, it doesn't mean what's gonna be recommended or what you're gonna approve, but can you the way we look at it and come up with funding sources, instead of me kind of guessing at what those are gonna be sometimes, like can you let me know what you want to request of what being your funding source? And she does know some of those, was her recommendation from capital maintenance, that are school capital maintenance reserve. Trying to be collaborative and
with each other. When they requested the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar match money.
Mm-hmm.
For the H V A C.
Yes.
Where did that money come?
Their capital maintenance reserve.
Where?
Their, their capital maintenance reserve, the school's capital.
They, they use that money, that's where the bulk of their capital maintenance reserve.
Prior to that, I'm just gonna pull it up. Easier than guessing, I think prior to that, there was probably one point four million dollars in there and then.
Yeah, they had one point four, one point three, something like that, they took seven hundred and fifty thousand now to match that grant. And that was, um, H V A C units, if I remember.
So we used out of the one point four that they had, we had originally earmarked seven ninety-nine, which was three seventy-five for the first round of the H V A C, their transportation rate, the radios for their buses and also the P L C classrooms that are actually gonna get put back in because they're not actually gonna do that project, the preschool classrooms. But they came back and they needed three seventy-five more and we took that out of their school capital maintenance reserve to come down to two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars left right now.
Two forty-two, okay.
But we'll go put, putting two thirty-four back in there, so they'll be up to four seventy-six, something like that.
Which they can, I agree with Mr. Williams, they can use some of that money for some of these projects they want to do.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
As long as we're under the policy guidelines, yes, sir, Mr. Scotts.
Uh, just suggestion. You've got these resolutions on, they don't put them on the consent agenda?
Because this will be some discussion.
One result, I did it all in one big one so that it could be.
It's gonna be complicated and it's gonna have some questions, that's all.
I do have some other ones, but the others, that one's, that one is the more complicated of the three, four.
That's one, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. This nine twenty-six is for future buses, not for, not for.
Future buses, not, not the, the diesel buses, the electric buses, they're replacing what they were gonna do for twenty-three.
Right. F Y twenty-four buses.
Yes, the nine twenty-six is for F Y twenty-four buses.
Okay.
All right.
And, um, while we're still waiting on schools to finalize some of those, um, estimates for funds they'll use for the, um, existing school bus money that'll affect their twenty-four C I P. Um, we did have a couple of changes related to, um, school construction funds and how they'll be used, which we have listed in the, the next slide here. Um, they're proposing additional six hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars for the landmark center. Um, and school construction funds for the H VAC and, uh, other upgrades, but they're they're lowering, um, a million dollars in school construction funds, um, due to a much lower, uh, bid that, um, that they anticipated. We're good for school C I P discussion for now, um, we can move on to fire and rescue apparatus. I have listed here, um, a few of their, um, uh, apparatus, uh, engine seven oh one, brush seven oh one, and an ambulance and the various, uh, funding sources. For the general fund, we have an impact of a quarter million dollars. Um, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars separately will be funded through E M S fees and we have, um, debt of seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for a total one point three six million dollars and we have Chief Warner here for any questions related to the, um, apparatus that could be, and we have a full list of apparatus on the following slide.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Scotts.
So when we say F Y twenty-four debt, what is that?
It'd be a lease.
Release?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That was a change, right, in how we have to go leases as debt in our.
No, that, those lease, those leases are not different, those are the copier leases, stuff, things that we used to call operating leases, we have to show as capital leases. And the financial board. Don't get me so far about that one.
Okay, the following slide shows the full list for the whole ten years. Um, with various funding sources, this is updated, um, every year. And if there are no further questions for fire and rescue, uh, we have the sheriff vehicles listed here, this does include the four vehicles for the four sheriff deputy positions that are being proposed for a total cost of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, coming from the general fund and we also have listed the full vehicle, um, list for the sheriff's office over ten years.
I'm, I'm gonna back up, Mr. Fire and Rescue. So the, uh, engine seven oh one, brush seven oh one and an ambulance. Those are all gonna be leased except for the ambulance?
No, so we'll pay, we've proposed the general fund would pay for brush seven oh one and then we would put a down payment of a hundred and twenty-five thousand down on the engine and then lease the remainder of the engine.
What's the term of those leases?
I think we do yours ten years, ten years because they're twenty twenty-year vehicles.
You hold, chief, you hold on to it for twenty years is the plan, right, is how you try to average them out, okay?
Were there any questions, uh, for the sheriff vehicles C I P?
Do we have inflation factored in for those sheriff vehicles?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I hope it's enough.
So far this will be enough, but who knows in six months? And that doesn't include the four.
Mr. Chairman.
No, this is not a good four new, this is.
Yeah.
We put the four new vehicle or I proposed in his operating budget for now, so that, because it was easier for me when I'm looking at a position, uh, what all it takes to get that position. These are the additional vehicles on top of the four that he would like to replace.
Would be total of five hundred and fifty thousand.
So if we're getting four for four new deputies, if we approve that.
These are replacing seven.
Seven, seven more vehicles to be replaced. Um, has that put us on a pretty good rotating cycle?
Sure.
But we are, uh, much better cycle, we have been advanced and we're very close to being able to, uh, reduce the requests down in the following years, um. And depending upon what we do here. And I spoke to my captain earlier, we may be able to come back as six and seven and seven this year, so.
Okay.
Y'all get seven right now, but.
What, here's a, what happens to these cars? They get turned in.
We go, they must go. Or they go to the assessment.
I'm kind of wondering where these cars, because there's a lot of places I think that they could go, they're probably a little bit beefy, or they may not be, you know, able to handle what a deputy needs to go through, but there's many other, um, opportunities in the county where we can use these off sheriff deputies cars for something else in the county, so. They, pardon me, his captain called me. Good, good.
Good job done.
That's the right answer, I mean, that's the right.
Purpose them to fire and.
Getting around here for that.
Yeah.
Having old guards and old guard.
Right, right, that's true.
Fred, how many miles on similar, Fred, how many miles do you get on these before you put them in usually?
We're trying to, to get rid of cars with about a hundred and twenty-five thousand, a hundred and thirty thousand miles, we weren't able to do that in the past, we're, we're there now. Now, that doesn't sound like a lot of miles for a family car.
Right.
Uh, because my personal truck has more miles than that, but um, it, for us, it's the hours that they run, I think people forget sometimes that, that they, they idled in traffic accidents and, and, and for eight and a half hours sometimes and so the total hours on a, the law enforcement vehicles went more important than mileage. And, um, so, plus, we're looking at a car that maybe called upon to do five hundred miles an hour response, and you're right back to zero at other times, so. It's a.
Fix a beating.
Yeah, it's not a family car.
But they're good cars for other places in the county to be used. All right.
Sorry, my computer turned off, but we are good.
As we go to administrative.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. See. Now, re-hearing now. Okay, uh, next we have administrative vehicles, of which there are six listed here, but we break down the departments, um, that are requesting these vehicles for tot- total, uh, general fund impact of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Um, one for our building inspections, uh, three for facilities and two requested for our social services department. And we have the whole breakdown for ten years in the following slide.
So unlike the sheriff's department, we didn't put the cars in with a position request, right?
And these for building inspections, social services, those I believe are, are not associated with a new position, those are just, uh, a cycle of replacing aging ones or damaged ones.
I believe none of these are related to. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And we have the ten-year breakout here, uh, with the various departments that are requesting the vehicles. Um, all this, uh, ten-year C I P, it's all incorporated in our financial forecast model as well, um. So if there are no further questions for administrative vehicles, we.
Before we do.
Vehicles, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Scotts. We had, when we were back talking about the bus garage. Uh. But I know I raised it and Mr. finally weighed in on it because he had more experience than I do about a real preventive maintenance program for all of our vehicles. Um, to extend the life and safety of it, and we're not doing that, obviously.
Yeah, we, we don't have a true fleet program if you, if you want.
Each department kind of does their own thing and I think, um, we got a lot of vehicles. Um, we should have a real program.
That's. That's.
Yeah. You'll get your money back, yeah, you'll get your money back.
That was something, it was probably back twenty eighteen or so, um, kind of administrative tasking is doing some research, they're talking about what Talley's looked at what a good fleet program looks like and all that, so I think, uh, yeah, we'd be glad to look back at that and take that topic back up and see what we can do to have a better, uh, more robust fleet program, certainly.
Real, not real, but a real one.
A real one, yes.
Thank you. Next we have our facilities capital maintenance C I P. With a number of, um, projects such initiatives, um, described on the following, on the slide, we have a total five, general fund impact of four hundred and one thousand dollars, um, and we have, uh, further details in the next slide.
Mr. Chairman. What is the facility do?
It made the program. And that's, that's when if a light's out in your office, that's the program we use, put it in and alert that, where if there was a problem with the A C, it's, it's how employees, um, work.
So. When we have kind of picking the civilian updates for seventy-five thousand dollars, F Y twenty-four. Why is that here rather than in the C I P? It would seem to meet the, uh, C I P definition, does it not?
It does, um, I guess we've kind of looked at this as, uh, being smaller projects that we do internally, uh, for, um, that our facilities department would manage, but, but you're, you're not wrong that it would, it could meet, uh, shifted into the actual public works department.
So this, this is, these are things that we're doing with our staff.
Yes.
Okay. And we need an additional person to do it. And we need an additional person to do it.
And and I should say with our set, I can't say that some of these probably would not also be contracted out. I don't think our guys would be doing the apparatus floor and epoxy cleaning at company one, but um a lot of these are internal. Um like, for example, the Commonwealth Attorney Office renovations, they will do a lot of that on their own. So I guess kind of a very kind of split the definition, but I mean, yes, anything, the our capital project definition is twenty-five thousand. One at one year life, so we can, we can start shifting some of these into actual projects.
Just just what what are, you know, concession sheet helps me, that's all.
Certainly.
Speaking of upgrades, did how did? Administration, do you know how the administration? World came out today, you couldn't go home, couldn't go home, be in office today.
Yeah, went uh checked in on it uh before this and it was all painted, stuff was still off the walls, desk was still moved around. But it's uh yeah, they're moving, moving down, so the finance side H R is done. We are still still gotta put stuff back, so.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else?
Okay, um we have I T to um finish up for the night. Um with uh a number of projects for a total general fund impact that. One point two million dollars. And we have their their ten year C I P listed um below. The largest increase being the fiber network extension of seven hundred and thousand dollars. We have um Mr. Wood here to answer any questions we have regarding C I P.
Yes, sir, Mr. Scott. Where's the fiber going to our front? What what are we spending seventy hundred thousand to connect?
It would be uh running from Fire Company Two uh down sixty to the Oklahoma Sky Mark Center. And connecting to twenty-five different facilities all the way.
Is there any way we can? Piggyback off of Firefly?
Uh Firefly Split Friends is not going that that far down sixty, they're going to come down uh. Pointing at a map here. Sixty and then they're only gonna extend it by a half mile uh.
Um the conference room, audio, video, fifty thousand dollars, what 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 are we getting for that?
That's specific to the Fire Company Two training room upgrades that they like to have uh put in place there. Um that's a heavily used facility, both for the firefighters, volunteers, uh community uses that space. Um. The type of, the the size of that space and the costs associated with that type of system. Um we've received quotes up near that number, I think we can go for a fair bit less, but uh. That that's kind of the work number that I've got.
Okay, and we're going to turn in our keys. And spend a hundred thousand dollars for access control.
We currently have multiple access control systems in use throughout the county. Uh I T recently took ownership of access control and security cameras. Um like to condense that to one system. And uh in in increase its utilization throughout the country.
What are we trying to accomplish with that?
Standardizing the ability for employees and guests to. Enter and exit the building, I guess.
So all electronic.
Yeah.
We work better than the front doors at the county administration office. You can, well, you can wave a lot and not. That system, I mean. Anything else revolving revolving around company two here, the fire department?
Um company two is uh in need of access control camera upgrades, so they're part of that. Uh U P S that applies to any of our facilities. Um the fiber network expansion is. One of the reasons we want to go to company two is, one, you know, I I believe any of our facilities should be. Uh networked with the rest of the facility, but we also have a backup nine-one center at that location. And it's it's only mostly a backup nine-one center at that location because it's not connected over fiber. So that will help. Increase its ability to act if it truly siloed standalone at the courthouse burns down.
Right.
They get a hundred percent. At a moment's notice, operate out of the conflict too.
Does company one have any of this?
Um not not currently, not.
Audio, video?
Our our goal was to move away, at least as far as the backup center for the nine-one-one center, be away from the courthouse area.
Right.
Because if something happened to the courthouse area, we'd change that.
Right.
Cameras, access control, audio, video upgrades is something that Bill Taylor and I have talked about. Um and I believe that's part part of our project, yeah, so our project are. Plan going to that renovation, yeah.
So the fifty thousand dollars back here for the floor a little while ago, apparatus floor clean, is that, where is that going?
That that was a project uh from. At least five years ago that we could not do at the time and it wasn't because of funding or anything like that, it was because of. Moisture in the floor itself.
Okay.
And uh and it the facilities folks have done a tremendous job in trying to remove all the moisture from underneath the buildings up there. And and it's just a project that keeps. Keeps coming, keeps coming and until we're absolutely ready for it. But this, it was approved by the board, I want to say probably a board prior to you.
Is it um, is that for, it is for company one, right? So that's not included in the one, three billion, four million, five million on the additions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Question for uh Mr. Warner. You guys get a. I I have no idea how much money, but from donations. What do you do with that?
Most of that were turned back into the membership themselves. Uh it's an incentive, uh what uh what our goal is is for when. People donate to the companies, to the volunteer companies, that it reinvest back into those volunteers. And it may be meals for duty crews, it may be uniforms, it may be, they might even fund some of the equipment that that. Goes on our apparatus, but it usually reinvests back into our volunteers. Some of the, and when I say that, uh some of our volunteer companies. Company three, out there, volunteer squad, company five, company four, they use that for upkeep on their facilities as well. And the board has been generous enough to help on some projects at some of those companies. But they've also put money towards their project, like part in my payment. Uh but they they matched some funds as well.
Okay.
So it, you know, it's not like it's a. A big savings account and it reinvests back into that.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh now it's time for a general discussion for C I P, if um you all would like, I mean. And just a reminder regarding the calendar, um our upcoming regular meeting twenty-seven uh at six thirty.
Mr. Chairman. So I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I've used, you know, information technology since we're there, you know, looking at that page. The top half, you know, lists all the different projects to be funded from the general fund. If you pass the C I P. That means those dollar amounts that gets incorporated in budget. We choose to fund these, but your proposed budget. It doesn't include the C I P general fund funded projects at this point, that's it.
That's us.
So it includes all of what. I'm seeing here for each department, anything with general fund. That's very helpful.
And so um next time, speaking of building on that, the one thing in this, if you go to the, you have that page there. Looking at our budget calendar moving forward, the the one thing I want to see how you want to fit in is now, tonight we've gone through and and you've seen. All the requests that were originally um proposed to be funded in uh my first draft budget, you've seen the full O C I P and Miss Lane's request, so you've got. Uh all of that under you, um previously you all asked to see a scenario for. Uh a budget of seventy-three cent tax rate, but with and without uh K P T R A relief. Um so we need to present that to you and discuss that, um so uh looking at this. Budget calendar in here, it suggested possibly we could have a workshop. Ahead of the March twenty-seventh meeting, if that works, uh we could also. Fit it into the regular March twenty-seventh meeting, that'll start to be a pretty big agenda um with with that added on. Uh we could also discuss it at the April third planned workshop, there's. Uh room for that on there, although then that starts to get the the schedule pretty tight if you all, you know, see any significant changes beyond that. Um so just wanted to give the board's thoughts on this schedule um. How if anything would change?
Could we do split it in both, March twenty-seventh and April third, you know, maybe?
As part of the the regular meeting um.
Or be a little earlier, like you suggested on March um twenty-seventh, and then we need to finish it up, go to the third.
What agenda do we have, Brett?
Uh for the March twenty-seventh, we will publish the packet uh Wednesday of this week currently. Uh Ag Forest District Committee wants to present to the board, uh we've got possibly no appointments. Uh some of the uh budget and appropriations, uh the one for schools as well as more regular ones that would be on consent. Uh then as far as public hearings, uh we have a private road case um under new business, public hearings, we have. The two text amendments as well as the uh more sets C U P.
On the real estate rate.
And the real estate rate of a carry, so it's. Uh but we would have some time, but it's a, you know, it'll be a relatively full agenda.
Martin, first, I'm speaking, yeah. I try to get away from those five-hour meetings. And that's what we're talking about, because you're getting mentioned returns, so if we go back to back. You know, with a two-hour workshop and then go into a three-hour meeting. It's five hours. Can we do something this Thursday? Can you want to do something this Thursday? I mean, I mean, I just, that's, I'm just saying, I don't like five-hour meetings. That's the reason I ask them. Yeah.
Yeah, and we could, if if you want to, we can go back, uh look at our schedules, see what's. What days are available and pull the board, if you all want to add another workshop uh somewhere in the next week or two weeks. As well, we were just looking at the scheme of the existing schedule, where could we possibly fit it, but if we need to add. Another workshop either afternoon or evening, we can do that.
I mean, you you we're talking about. Pretty substantial things, they're very important to citizens of this county. Um the fact rate, and I'm not interested in packing it on um. For the twenty-seventh.
I just want to point out which we can put, we can move things, I mean, based on this schedule right now, that on the April third. Would be the day that you have to tell me what to advertise in the paper um for the public hearing.
For the tax rate.
No, for the budget.
Budget.
Yeah, because a- and and as always, you can always publish something higher and you can reduce it, but once you published it, you can't increase it. So not that I'm thinking anybody's gonna increase anything, but um because. The power tan today, I actually have to do almost twelve days ahead of the public hearing because it only runs on Wednesdays, so. Um that pigeonholes me a little bit on on when I have to get it in um. And but, so I'm just putting that out there, that if we push. Past April third on telling me what you want to advertise, then that will push the whole schedule, so.
The tax rate's the same thing, April third, right?
Tax rate is the, the real estate rate. Is the public hearing is on Monday, you can adopt it on Monday if if, but I don't know that we're there yet, so. Um we're gonna have the public hearing, I'm. Gonna bring a resolution that can be modified or changed or moved or whatever. Um but it has to be done by April third, that was like the drop dead date for the commission of the treasurer. They really need it by then, that's, I think that's pushing it for the treasurer, but she was willing to say that that that's it, like, she needs to know.
So maybe a workshop on Thursday will be needed.
Or if we, which Thursday are you talking about? So I'm thinking, if we do um. Monday nights of public hearing, I can hear from the public Monday nights. Then we have Tuesday or Wednesday of next week, we could do a meeting. I'm just, we could, but I think we're we're going to have some scenarios laid out for us, okay? Uh and I like, that would be useful to have that, but. I get what you're saying. Meeting Monday night, yes, okay. Just, it puts it in context, it's it's like. Wish we hear from anybody, I don't know if anybody's coming. Yeah, I don't have them. I'm fine with Thursday.
Uh Miss Schuer is not available uh Thursday, um we can both do a Friday afternoon workshop.
I don't care. I'm not a town Friday. Who, who'd have this place on Thursday?
I'll be here.
No, I have a poll, how do you?
Oh.
I mean, you can do without me, then.
No, no, we can't do it with that.
Thursday night.
The information, the information could be provided to the board. Um ahead of time and we could have a meeting um sometime after Monday. If if this week doesn't work for the board.
You mean, you're talking like the Tuesday, the twenty-eight or twenty-nine, sorry, after next week's. So when, when is, when is the uh information available?
Now that we've gone through everything, I think we could um send you all something. In the middle of the week. But probably middle of the week, we could send something out to you, um we've got to get the twenty-seventh regular meeting packet uh done in hour. That's always um. A lot to do, but uh. It's mostly mostly done and we didn't have any drastic changes, some stuff based on discussion tonight and discussion last week, the tweet, so.
And what what Mr. Farley suggests Tuesday, Wednesday, next week? I'm gonna either take whatever works for everybody else and some on my calendar.
And we can, we can get you something um probably Wednesday or Thursday on the scenarios, then you could have the rest of this week, the weekend to review them. Um have a regular meeting and then dive into that.
And I'll I'll provide an updated financial forecast model based on the scenarios as well. Um with uh.
Yeah. Tuesday or Wednesday, both look okay for all.
Three o'clock, you're thinking for Tuesday or Wednesday?
Do with that, Wednesday, the twenty-ninth.
Yeah, if you all want to look and um. Let me do tomorrow, then we can put the notice out, make everybody aware, but yeah, so between one and just two day.
All right. I'm good Wednesday or Tuesday, you know, whatever worked for everybody else, I'm good. We go either one of those days. All right. You good with that, Brett? Yeah, okay. I'll take us to public comment period. And one from the public, which should speak to the board, you have three minutes. And you're speaking on behalf of the group, you have up to five minutes. Anyone on Zoom?
No one, Henry is.
Not seeing anyone, we're closed public comment period, county administrator comments?
Good discussion, thank you, that's it.
Board comments?
Have one, sir. Command, threaten staff, we get what your job you're doing.
Thank you.
And uh. Have a town hall tonight, so I'll get company two, so with special guest Jamie Timbly, I'll let district two constituents, I'll see you there. It's on.